Is spelled B R O O K L Y N.
That's right.
Thank you.
How's it going, Clint?
All right, how are you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is my staff at it, and it's basically just an emergency declaration. Everywhere you see a blank is either could be required to or strongly encouraged.
Okay, thank you, sir.
There are six people waiting in the waiting room.
Rich even not, yeah.
Good, about you?
Hand out like that. Stretch it as far as it'll go. We're sixteen.
I call this meeting, special meeting today for my concerns about the in huge increase in the number of positive coronavirus cases statewide. And our small community is quite few also. We go from two about a month ago to twenty-two, maybe even more than that today, but as of last night, there were twenty-two. So I just, I have been disappointed in the folks not following CDC guidelines that this board has pushed from the very beginning. We haven't created any of our own guidelines. We've always said, let's follow the CDC guidelines. And the three easy things that they ask us to follow is social distance, wash our hands, and wear masks. We have not been wearing masks. I don't know about washing hands, but majority of our people in the city are not wearing masks when you're in a closed place and you can't social distance. So I just, like I say, I've been disappointed. We were more concerned two months ago when there were only one case. Now we don't seem to be concerned at all, and there are twenty-two cases. So I don't know what's changed, but I would like for the people to start paying attention. I don't think this board wants to mandate anything, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure our community stays safe. And so with that, I'd open the floor for, not the floor, but other commissioners comments. And then we'll open the floor to comments or anybody online for comments.
I'll go first. I just, to be kind with, I'm not for any type of emergency declaration. I do agree, Mr. Mayor, it's this, I mean, we're in a bad situation across the state, not so much locally, but I do understand that we do have visitors here that could possibly bring it to our community, the reason why we closed the boat ramp and such. But I've gotten, ever since the meeting was called, I've gotten numerous texts, calls stating that they, the public, our public, do not want to wear masks full-time or wear masks out publicly. And I'm sure probably have, everybody else have too. But I completely understand the concern. I think, now, I don't, I do agree that I would be willing to vote to send a message to encourage the use of masks and the CDC guidelines, state guidelines that have been put out previously, but I can't vote on an emergency declaration for the use of masks. That's all. Thanks, sir.
I've also had calls, now, I don't mind telling you, out of calls that I received or emailed, it was closer to four phone calls encouraging that we pass something that would require or suggest the use of the mask. And I did speak to one business owner just before the meeting, opposite of that. I understand it. I don't mind sharing with anyone here today that I've always been kind of in the middle. In my family, as someone that is making masks in St. Petersburg and is strong supporter of everyone should be wearing a mask. My wife wears a mask when we go into Home Depot, and I probably don't have all the masks. Yesterday, in our local grocery store, I went in the grocery store with a mask in my pocket, and by the time I made it to the soup aisle, I put a mask on because I had like peer pressure of the ones wearing the mask. I felt like I was the one being defiant. It's not an easy decision, and I get what Brett is saying. I agree with the, the last thing the city needs to do is mandate anything to the public that they don't need to. We have enough rules and regulations. But on the other side of that, the argument is to keep people safe and healthy or healthier. So I would like to approach the subject with some type of action, no matter what we call it. Doesn't have to be an emergency declaration, it could be called many things. I did some research this morning, like our attorney did, and read different counties, different cities in the state of Florida, how they went about it. Some went all in and said, you're gonna wear a mask if you're in the city, and if you don't, we're gonna fine you five hundred dollars. One city, it was actually a criminal offense. I don't know part of that. I think we need to wade into this as softly as possible and courage, if we want to use words like strongly encourage, but I would like to start there and see, can we get people to support the wearing of masks? If it doesn't work, then in a couple of weeks, you may have to move in another direction. And I would, I would hope that majority of the people that are here visiting and the ones like I saw in the grocery store yesterday were openly wearing the mask. I think that the city at least deserves the opportunity to do something on their own without Big Brother telling them they have to do it. That's where I'm at.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Langston.
I think wearing masks is important. I think that social distancing is important. I think washing hands is important and disinfecting. I do believe that at some point, we have to let adults make responsibility. I have my mask right here, and I have, I'm gonna admit, I haven't been wearing them all the time, but my daughter told me one day I come out in the house, and I was telling her, where you going? Bring your mask with you. And she said, Dad, what's the difference? You're gonna have your mask on when you're coming around us, you know? So that made me think, that's my responsibility. My family, I need to take care of and support, make sure that's safe. So I wear my mask. Now, I think that if we take our time, we look at the percentages, I think we had over twelve hundred, well, fourteen hundred ninety-eight negative tests as well. Twenty-three thousand five hundred, ten, ten is, I think, okay back to normal. Three, um, non-residents. So if you could have the entire state, I think we're not doing bad at all. I think that emergency declaration right now, I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think if we wait, I think we had over three hundred people to test Thursday, and they said it was close to a hundred and something, I'm guessing, who went to Appalachia Cola Friday to get tested. So let's, let's look at the results of these tests. We got another week coming up too. If we, um, see if the numbers go up and you know, see that we need to make a change, let's do it again, right now, or I'm making a file in the city like that, I need to see some more numbers. And that's just where I'm at at this moment.
Very good. And really, that's why I called this meeting, to make folks be a little more aware of our concerns. And I asked the attorney, so he looked me call off, called off guard to research our rights under the governor's emergency declaration and our own emergency declaration. So he put something together for our view. And so we, we need to, we need to do something as a board. And I've had about, it's about fifty-fifty for and against my calls and texts. And I understand, I had one gentleman call say we should close the boat ramp again. And so it's bouncing all off the board. But so this time, we have a few folks from the public, anybody like to come forward and speak on the subject, we'd welcome.
Yeah, I've got him right here.
Let's see, Commissioner Ashbrook would like to make a statement. Can you get him?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Okay, Mayor, yeah, I like everybody else, I've got about a fifty-fifty for and against phone calls this week. I think one thing that we haven't really considered is we need to, we need to encourage these business owners. You know, everything always falls at the seat or at the feet of the city commission. These, these business owners, i.e., you know, if Piggly Wiggly, if people are complaining that there's not social distancing or not wearing masks, Piggly Wiggly, that should encourage, you know, the owner to mandate that for their customers. I'm with, I think, the majority of y'all on the fact that I would, I would rather not mandate citizens have to do something. However, the individual business owners may lose business if they do not. This is a business decision for them. Our job is to provide resources to try to keep people safe. You know, our officers should have masks to hand out. We need to be probably setting out a proclamation saying, look, these are the steps that we want you to take. But as far as an enforcement mechanism on an ordinance or an emergency declaration, I don't believe that we even have the infrastructure set up, the court system, the municipal tickets. We don't, we don't have that ability, and I am totally against having an ordinance that we cannot enforce. This is a citizens initiative that needs to be led by the citizen, you know? And I, I was just driving through Appalachia the other day, and I saw a guy on the side of the road, wear a mask or go home. Yeah, so they're gonna be guilting some people into it. I think that we need to strongly encourage it. I just, I don't know that an emergency declaration or an ordinance is gonna, is gonna do it. You gotta look at the effectiveness of what we, what we ultimately vote on today. Having an ordinance would be just as effective as having a declar, or having a proclamation. Either way, you know, we have to decide whether or not we can enforce it. And I don't want to criminalize something, you know, if we don't have to. And that's what I've got at this point, Mayor. I think I'm, I would be prepared to vote along the lines of a proclamation of some sort.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Folks, kind of get out of town a little bit. I've been to Georgia recently and Tennessee recently, and mostly businesses, or I'd say most of them, I'd go far as saying ninety-five percent of businesses, of employees, restaurants, shop owners, so forth, wear masks. They seem to take it a little more seriously than we have, and I don't really understand why. But that's just the way it is. We just maybe change our thinking and be a little more socially responsible. And so I would, I personally went to just about every restaurant in town Tuesday, two weeks ago, and asked them, asked their employees to wear masks. That pretty much fell on deaf ears, and I heard yesterday that there was one restaurant in town that's gonna start doing it today or even yesterday. But anyway, I would even say, would, would we even think about the city getting some portable signs of some sort to put on every block, on the sidewalk or something, and keep our city safe, wear a mask, or something of that nature? We could encourage our, our visitors, we could, we could, we could set a good example ourselves. And like Commissioner Hoffman said, none of them say us wear a mask, they might decide to wear a mask, but I do, I just think it's important that we do that. So anyway, at this point, I'll open up the online Zoom or the floor where anybody would like to speak on.
I've got, go ahead.
At least, you gotta come forward, sign in, and state your name, Mr. Jared.
As far as us today, they start moving, you was there, everybody's closing down. Every one of us, we're not, we're not for this at all. I personally had to throw people out of the store whenever he's limiting people in the store, people like you that I've seen as family. We're not doing that again. We're not anywhere near a point where this even has to, yeah, we can talk about it, but it's not the point of doing it.
Sign your name, Jared, right there. My, my question, Jared, is this, if, if other places allow, just say Home Depot and Lowe's feel like their employees should wear masks, I don't see a big difference. We're smaller and even more, more compact. So I don't see it as a requirement. I'm just saying, is there a personal responsibility there that if you think it's important to wear? If not, that's your personal, you know, you.
Personally, not A C, personally, I see as you wanna wear, you can wear it, not.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
I believe we have one online that's for.
Okay. The email or the Zoom?
It was a Zoom, but she's no longer online.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience want to speak? Okay, let's, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we, do we wanna, oh, we make a motion to strongly encourage the public to wear masks? Leave it at that and see, see how that goes? Would do nothing?
I think we need to do something, you know, because if we do nothing, it's kind of sending a message that we don't care one way or the other. And I don't think any of us in the city feel that way. From what I've heard, we all agree that we need to do more. I just don't want to do too much. I, I support a proclamation like David just brought up. I think that's a good step in the right direction. I even would support encouraging the business owners to set up some kind of mask-wearing protocol. I noticed that in the Piggly Wiggly yesterday, and I've been told that, that the owner of the pig has now moved forward and mandating that all their employees, and it was evident yesterday, there were more precautions being followed, and that may need to be a little better as a shopper. So I'm fine with moving in the direction of suggesting that we encourage, I like the idea of signs, I just don't like making a rule that you can't actually enforce. That's, that's where I am.
I agree. I'm not.
I'm fine with doing some signage to encourage use of masks and also encourage, you know, we've got residents outside travel. I know I've traveled outside, and I've come back, I've tested twice. And just, you know, encourage testing, encourage signage with, with use of masks. And I'm fine with putting them, you know, Reed Avenue or whatever.
You, are you, are you okay with asking a motion, not an emergency declaration?
I don't, I'm not crazy about doing that. I don't, I don't know if that word is used, but I'm, I don't want, I wouldn't go that route, but I'd be willing to make a motion to, you know, for signage and encouraging all that signage, use of masks.
No, you could just cross out the words.
I just don't mean it, I wouldn't go that far, me personally, and that's, that's my vote, but I go down and I read more, and I'm not crazy about the verdict.
You know, this morning, when I was reading what other areas are doing, it became quite evident that, it doesn't matter if you go to the Gulf County Health Department website, the links there are going to send you eventually to the CDC site. And they may go one step further and send you first to the Florida Health Department, and then the Florida Health Department will relay you over to the CDC. What I've heard over and over in our meetings, and you've heard me say it, is I support the idea of going along with the guidance that is handed down from the CDC, the Florida Health Department, and our Gulf County Health Department. All of those, as of today, encourage the use of a cloth mask for everyone, unless you can actually be outdoors and be in social distance. So by supporting what we're talking about, the encouragement of the mask, all that's doing is going along with what's been suggested by the experts, because anyone can look at the five of us and realize we're not experts on when to wear a mask and when how to control a pandemic. I do believe the expert spokesperson for our city happens to be the mayor who's a pharmacist. So I think we need to do something.
I'd be, I think that proclamation would be better right now. I think we definitely need to encourage wear masks, signs, signs, I agree with the signs around, and I just want to encourage the business system to get involved. I mean, sometimes people have to do what, just do what's right. If you're looking for, for city or state or commissioners to make a decision for you about what you want to do as far as your health, I mean, where I'm come to, you should be one of the, kind of the situation on your own, not, not people forcing you to do what you, do what you think is right. And then what, what can I tell somebody to say if they put a mask on and they can't breathe? Or they don't like the way it feels, or they get overheated, you know? There's a lot of things that we have to think about when you're forcing somebody to put something on. Everybody's not gonna agree, but I think right now is not the time to mandate masks. I mean, you'll, you'll just, what we can do, after we get more numbers, and, and I think a proclamation would be, but, and that's my, that's my opinion.
So, so we need someone to make a motion that, that the city passes a proclamation that we encourage, strongly encourage our citizens to wear masks and follow the CDC guidelines, which is wash your hands, stuff your dishes, wear a mask. And we just, I think all we're doing is reinforcing what the CDC already tells us to do.
I will point out.
Yeah, because the only reason I use the word declarations is Appalachia Cola. We put the proclamation like that. Right, right, right. And I, and I think, Clint, right now, what I'm hearing from this board is that they're not quite ready to make it almost like an official document and leave it open until our next meeting, which is Tuesday, to see, see how we're doing. You know, maybe, maybe all of a sudden, it's, everybody's just doing what they should be doing all along, and maybe make it a little more official at our next meeting, not mandate, but still you can, you can have a document that, you know, we sign and, or I sign that says basically what we've been talking about already. So, but anyway, we need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that the city move forward with a declaration encouraging the use of the patient population. And I haven't had time to look at all of the language, but the motion would be, we take a stance of encouraging our public, our visitors, to follow the CDC guidelines, which part of that is wearing a cloth covering when you can't social distance. If we can.
So you, you're not, you're not, your motion not for declaration, but just a motion?
I think we can make this a little less wording, and I think that the attorney can weigh in on, on that. Brett, it seems a little, little heavy-handed. But I'm fine with making a motion that speaks to the encouragement, the city moving forward and encouraging our visitors and the public to wear the mask in accordance with the CDC guidelines.
Okay, as a motion. Second.
Mayor, I will second for discussion.
We have a second, but go ahead, we're open to discussion.
Okay, Mayor, I just wanted to point out that in the future, the number twenty-two is scary. There are not twenty-two actively infectious, infectious people in the city of Fort Tendy or Gulf County. I would like to figure out the number trimmed down to who got diagnosed here but went back to their home county, and how many people have had it but no longer are actively infected. We may have less than a handful of people in the city, but moving forward, I don't want to base decisions on the big scary number. I want to know the facts of who's actually actively infected in their community at the time. Just moving forward, I'd like to make that observation, that I'd like to have that information before we vote on future items.
Commissioner Ashbrook, Commissioner Langston brought that up earlier in his discussion, and he reiterated that with the, the number who have recovered, the number that were out of town, and it left a small number of us locals. He had that information, and that's, that'll be reflected, I'm sure, in minutes.
Okay, great, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this one, absolutely. Is this gonna be drafted or for the next meeting, or are we gonna vote on it?
This is just strictly a motion to encourage folks to wear masks and follow the CDC guidelines.
Okay, I'm good. That's, I'm, if I'm.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Any discussion coming up, please? May I sign your name and, and state your name?
I'm Ms. Coleman. And my concern is all the, all the tourists. And I walk down the boat ramp twice a day. I go to the Marina. There's hardly any more place. This morning was Texas, Texas, Louisiana, Alabama. And I just, I want to close the boat ramp down because, for one, it's just been so crazy, and they're not, they're not, they're just throwing trash. I pick up trash all the time, but they don't, they don't respect our city. And I'm just worried they're bringing it here. And so I would, I like the idea of closing the boat ramp, though I know that maybe this is the biggest time for, you know, the tourism or whatever, but that's my worry.
Yeah.
I want to go home.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
They're not going home.
And I, my, Ms. Coleman, my statement, the one gentleman that asked me to bring up closing the boat ramp was this, they're here anyway with their boats. They're gonna stay here all week long. I would rather have them put their boat in and go out on the bay for eight hours than be walking around town infecting everybody, so that's. So that's kind of my, my thinking in that regard, but a lot of what you said is, is I agree with. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passed. I have a, I think.
Okay.
All right, we move on, uh, to the Frank Faye Park Gazebo, better known as the pier. For me, I don't know if that's called a pier. But anyway, uh, Jim, you want to take that?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday, we did open up our 2022 Gazebo, five. It was the third time we actually went out to bid for Frank Faye Park Gazebo. As most realize, it's an iconic piece of Fort St. Joe. Referred to as a city pier when I was a kid. If you flip over to page one, we gave off and received one bid. Uh, the bids are $38,055 to activate demo, the existing or damaged pier that's in place now. And then $298,426 would be to put it back, very similar to the structure pre Hurricane Michael. So that was the one bid we got on the price tag. The price come down substantially on there, so we are within striking distance if it's a wish of the board to reconstruct the city pier or gazebo. Flip over to the head out I handed to you. Uh, do have a breakdown of the items that we are working through. At Hurricane Michael, and you'll flip down to the fourth item that says, "Pier Park to Bid." What we did is this is a breakdown of the money that we believe will become available for. We do not have all this money today. $67,000 is insurance money that, uh, that is, has been secured for the actual pavilion. If you look over, slide over, $30,000 is an additional depreciation that Mr. Cor has been indicating that we will be able to get from insurance if we rebuild. I see a 67 and 30, those two, 67 and 30,000 dollars potentially more. Slide over to FEMA. FEMA has not been finalized at this point, and we have not received this money. But based on the numbers we have so far, they're indicating they would potentially give us $144,000, which would be the 75%. And then we would have a match with the state, 25% of Burke and half, 12.5% for the city, 12.5% for the state. Total of $48,000. What does this all mean? At the end of the day, if everything was aligned, started to align perfectly, it's the what we know today, you're looking at $289,000. Money out of pocket for city, if everything held true, would be approximately $34,000 because your bid you're looking at is 298. And you've still got part of your max, and call it $10,000 additional. That's not covered under the potential money we have coming in. So at this point, what we need to do is we need to be thinking about, do we want to put the city pier back together? We bid it out three times, it is iconic, or so wishes the board to put the city there.
I had a call last week from a gentleman that didn't know we were bidding it out. And, uh, he grew up here, and, um, he was wanting to, uh, to start a fun, fundraising drive to build it back even before we, uh, we knew what we were doing. Because it's, it's an icon of the city, it's most of the sunset picture you see. You got that pier in the background, uh, and it's well-received, uh, but, uh, I mean, non-budget item, it'll end up costing us about $35,000, uh, after insurance and FEMA. Is that correct, Jim?
Almost will, we'll steal that money.
$35,000, so, so to. I'd like to sit bill back. When, when it came in, it's 450, and it went way down on my priority list of important things to come back. This is a lot more encouraging to me. I, I would like to figure a way that we can make it work. For the public, it just shows that we're just getting rid of the remnants of Hurricane Michael and, and progressing with, with building our, we'll call it our infrastructure back. And, uh, but I'll leave it to staff to figure out a way that we can do it.
Was it an option to move forward with the demo while we buy ourselves some time to just make a decision on the rebuild part?
Some, that's a very convincing statement, and I would, you know, you want to respond to that? We've got $67,000 in the bank from insurance. Uh, it's going to cost us, what, $38,000 removing?
We did bid it out both ways for the option to do it. Now, as far as how long after the demo they were holding for, I, more likely, if you know what kind of equipment they have on staff, because they're calling my dedicated equipment to do it. So I can make some phone calls, try to ask management to do that. I mean, how much time they would give us to make that final decision to rehab after the demo? I can bring that to them and find out, maybe in a couple of days.
Yeah, I'd like to know, because we were in agreement, and, and even the people that did, this company and the two prior, all agreed that they would not be able to use the existing islands. So I would be comfortable with going ahead and approving the demo as long as it did not increase the bid price. And, and I get it, they're going to have a lot of their equipment on site, so they're, they may not want to do it that way.
Yeah, because I don't know whether they're late trying to get equipment, if they want to have to get order their equipment, or order up the equipment and all that stuff first, or have a late. But I'll be more active in the call time.
Well, why, why don't we do this? You, you, uh, motion to me made to accept the demo, move forward with the demo, and then that allowed him to reach out to them, and they say, "Good, time to lift." We will have to wait until next Tuesday.
And one question I have, Mr. Mayor. The design is based on what was actually there previously?
Very similar to, you know, you have some new standards that you might do, I believe. It's very, very similar with, it's a lot more reading, starting protocol.
Same footprint, in other words, same square footage, that type. I guess that's what I'd be interested in. My, uh, I think it showed progress just by getting a good volume and everything out of it.
Oh, yeah, that has to be done, no matter if we rebuild it or not.
Yeah, you're right.
My only, you know, concern is, are we going to definitely rebuild the gazebo? Or do we want to take some of that funding and move it to the other side of the boat landing and maybe build the observation deck that was discussed and presented at last meeting? I don't want to tie up all that money on the gazebo if we're actually thinking about this observation deck. That's the only reason I don't want to rush into.
And I think we really need to make a decision on the rebuild sooner than later because remobilization costs, if you were to, if we were to say that, you know, okay, we want to give it six months, six years, I don't think they're going to be able to hold that price for six months. Like, I mean, move and put in the food bag, remobilize.
About time that Scott come up. If we say we're not rebuilding the gazebo, do we want those islands there, which could be a hazard at night, boats coming in and that type of thing? I mean, they've got to come out regardless of we going to build or rebuild. So we've got a decent price here, we've got the money. So why don't we see if he would, see if he would do it? And we won't worry about him price going up as we go down later if it does. And that's our answer, we'll start looking at, at building a type gazebo on land that wouldn't require the specialized equipment, meaning, uh, bloody equipment that you didn't have to have to build a pier.
Sounds like what we're moving towards is quite getting it cordoned out? Find out how much time we have to make a decision on the rebuild.
Yeah.
Just one more concern. I, I'm, I, in the beginning, I like, like, moving it toward land and, and saving some money. But when you think about it, I think we're going to end up spending more in the long run and possibly having to dredge in that area, because that's right up under there, it's pretty, pretty shallow. We got that channel that goes through there. Or we'd have to put some kind of markers or something in there, so. I don't know, there's other things to think about.
Yeah.
If we wanted to widen it or whatever.
Well, need, need a motion to go forward with the, uh, with the gazebo and, uh, reach out to R.J. Goldman and ask him to, uh, we'd accepted a bid on the demo.
Because there was two completely separate bids, right?
Yeah, you had an option. Their initial bid, what they put it together was $38,055, $36,000 for the demo. And if you want to have a demo and put back to, um, 298.
I'll make a motion to accept the low and early bid to demo the islands at the city pier.
As a second. I'll say, second, Mr. Lowery. Commissioner Ashbrook, are you on board with that?
Yes, sir.
All righty, any more, any discussion, discussion in the public? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
At the same time, all right. Get that cleaned up, and if we have to, we can put some little buoys or markers out there, Commissioner Lowery. We probably need to do that anyway, and the other ones, I think Mr. Wood was there or somebody. Maybe Bill, you put that as Bill. Thank you. You know how to do it? We can do it again?
I think it needs to be moved anyway.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill. All right, um, let's see, we've got citizens to be heard. Ms. Coleman, you have anything else you'd like to add? Oh, okay, thank you. Bill, you got anything?
I would like to say.
All right, come right on down. Sign in and state your name, please.
I can make it up here. In regards to the pier, um, talked to a lot of folks around town. I think it's highly important, I wouldn't go that bad. And we can also value engineer the design costly with a contractor. And make save $30,000, $30,000. I, I haven't seen the design and know what's there. We all want to be a beacon of design and last forever.
Sure.
But I think it's, um, the comments I see in here, in town, social media, that that's probably like the number one, most internal, I think it's important time to get it done. I concur.
And, uh, we can get a fundraiser, just like we did the Lighthouse way back when if we need to. And I think a lot of people would participate in it, and, uh, so.
Okay. You might be surprised how much money the city could do, uh, you know, something on the door, uh, city hall is to get it started. To let people know there is a fundraiser, not like immediately.
Right, right. Um, but, but I think getting a demo right now would be, that's the right direction. And, uh, and, uh, I think if we have to bid it out one more time with no cost to demo, it, it, uh, they can make them cheaper, you know, they have more people to bid on. So, uh, uh, I, I'm glad we moved forward.
That's what I saw. Thanks, sir.
Mayor, do you have one other thing to announce? We moved forward. We got staff that had worked on kind of preparation, but it's plain as to be in those.
Okay, any, uh, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I got one, a question online from Mr. Parker. Wanted to know if they can have the farmer's market this weekend?
Uh, it's out and open, we've been having it. I don't, I don't, um, see any restrictions right now. Uh, we just encourage them to wear masks. Anybody, any commission items?
I would like to mention that I took the time to visit the, um, Washington Gym Summer Program and, and was very impressed with the activities, the counselors, the staff, and the precautions that they were obviously following.
Good, very good, very good.
I went out a couple of days, I went out a couple of days, it's, it's nice program that, um, they're going to really do job.
Good, good deal. Anything else? I, I just, go ahead, sure.
Um, I know you guys probably get a phone call too, but DCC needs to tighten up on picking up. Phone calls, I've been phone calling.
They were doing, they were doing that for a while.
Haven't been, I haven't seen them in about a month, a month and a half.
Please reach out to them.
Jim, we talked about it, we just, get them to do it.
Yep, and, and they're a little bit, all of my house, some of the regular dogs pick up. In the downtown area, so some of the business folks are complaining and, and, uh, writing stuff.
How often are they required to pick up the dumpster there by the fish plate?
I believe, Commissioner, we have them picking up, maybe two or three times a week, I believe.
I would like to see if we can get them to pick it up daily. That's what we first envisioned, that's what we discussed. And, uh, I was glad they moved the, the cataract dumpster closer, but it has got to be picked up on a daily basis. That's including Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, we'll smell it down there if you don't.
No, it's not that bad if it's, uh, you know, every day, but if they miss it a couple of days, yeah, it, it makes a big difference.
Oh, only I've got, um, I'm glad our city employee that tested positive, uh, is back and recovered. All the city employees got tested. Uh, there were no positives, uh, in the city employees, anybody had been in close contact with individuals. And, uh, so, so we lucked out, I think, and, uh.
I think confirmed everybody that got tested that day negative.
I, I, I haven't gotten you, you haven't got your results back? Well, I stand corrected, I'm sorry.
They don't call you if you're negative. It's not a real good policy.
It's not a good policy, but, yes.
I spoke with Brittany yesterday, and she said they used several different labs because they had provided them with the kits. They had sent them to the labs, the labs are backed up with all the testing. And one of our other employees checked today and still no results. You may call and ask, and if they have it, they will give it to you, but they do not have a lot of the results at this time.
So you guys got tested last Tuesday?
Thursday.
Oh, it was Thursday, and today is Tuesday. Okay, should definitely know something tomorrow.
They said seven to 10 days minimum.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
It used to be three to five.
Yeah, they told me three to five when, when I was doing.
Our city employee, first, it's been seven days.
Okay, well, my statement should say, I hope everybody that got tested was negative. Yeah, so that, that's my, my hope, and, uh, everybody been careful. And we do know that everybody that was in contact with our employee got tested.
Yes, we did contact all of them. Everybody that's come to the commission meeting, all of our department heads, and we had our department heads encouraged before that morning to do this.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Ashbrook, you got anything?
He's there. Okay, I'm here.
Okay, you, you got any final words?
Stay safe, wear your masks. Otherwise, we're going to have to mandate it eventually.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. All right, I'll entertain the motion with adjournment, and thank you all for coming. All right.